Call a meeting to order.
A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to welcome you all to a regular meeting of the Board of Commissioners. Remind you it's a public meeting and both a written record and a visual record are being maintained. I don't believe we have any awards and recognition at this moment, do we?
Yes, I do believe we do.
Do I do it now? Okay, sure.
Okay, the first one is for Sergeant Josh Roberts and he's in attendance.
Oh, I forgot about that.
Yeah, I know you did. I'm just gonna actually just go ahead and read this as written. Subject is DUII Multidisciplinary Impaired Driving Training Conference. Congratulations, you have been selected to receive the 2018 DUII Trainer of the Year Award. The award will be presented at the DUII Multidisciplinary Impaired Driving Training Center, or Training Conference rather, held at Seven Feathers Casino and Resort in Canyonville on April 25th to 26th, 2019. The award ceremony will be held during lunch on Friday, April 26th, 2019, between 12:00 and 1:15 PM. As an award recipient, your registration fees for the conference will be paid for by the DUII Multidisciplinary Training Task Force, along with two nights lodging if needed. Registration includes lunch both days. We encourage you to invite a personal guest for the award luncheon. However, we can only accommodate an additional two meals, et cetera, et cetera. But anyways, I just want to congratulate Sergeant Josh Roberts for being selected the 2018 DUII Trainer of the Year. Congratulations Sergeant.
Would you at least stand, Josh? There we go, thank you. So they know who is being honored, thank you. Congratulations.
And also, I don't believe Deputy Rankin, is he here? I don't see him. So, it's basically the exact same letter except for Sergeant Rankin has been selected to receive the 2018 DUII Enforcement Deputy of the Year Award. And that'll be same thing, presented the same awards banquet and everything. So I want to congratulate Deputy Rankin as well.
Is that it?
I have one more.
Okay.
And then I'm done.
No, that's fine.
Actually, so Commissioner Alfreding couldn't be here today, so he asked me to read those two letters and so I'm glad that you were here Sergeant, so, but because your liaison was not here, so I kind of read those on his behalf. But, one of my people is here who I'm the liaison for, with the Umatilla County Road Department. Corey Hardy, would you please stand? I want to commend Corey Hardy for going above and beyond this past week. One week ago today, the Umatilla County Board of Commissioners declared a state of emergency. During this emergency, our Public Works Director was out of town. Corey Hardy stood in his place. Under normal conditions, this can be stressful enough. However, due to the current circumstances, being the Acting Public Works Director, I leaned heavily upon Corey. On Friday, April 12th, the first time I asked Corey to respond to an emergency, he had just gotten home and was heating up his dinner, which I don't believe he even got to eat. Corey spent his weekend keeping our roads passable and our bridges clear. I asked Corey to attend a briefing put on by the Incident Management Team, and this was a very first for Corey. Many of the things I was asking him to do were new to Corey. The citizens of Umatilla County have many reasons to thank Corey Hardy for his hard work into these past few days. I want to be among the first to recognize him and have a token of my appreciation. Will you come up here, please?
As Commissioner Schaefer intimated, there are several heroes, many heroes amongst the county staff. Most of the, many of them report to Commissioner Alfreding, who is in Arizona at the moment, and he asked if those recognitions could occur when he was here in person, so, but of course Commissioner Schaefer is here, so. Any additions to the agenda?
There was...
Oh, I recognize the minutes, too.
Do you want to do the minutes first?
Yeah. Minutes of the February 20th meeting?
I'm making one. Shall we approve the minutes?
Second. On favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, sorry, counsel.
There have been two additions. The one is not on the printed agenda, but it is on the one on the screen, and as regard on a legal secretary position with the District Attorney's Office, and that's been asked to be added after their discussion on the law clerk position. And then at the end, we can have a discussion regarding the officers of the board.
Okay. Are there any individuals here who wish to speak who are not going to be part of our regular agenda? All right, then we'll move ahead to an update and briefing on the declaration of emergency that currently exists in the county. I'd like to call on Scott Stanton. I'm not sure what title you're using today, Scott, but he is Chief of Fire District One.
Thank you, yeah. Scott Stanton, for the record, Fire Chief of Fire District One, and I'm the Instant Commander for the county's Type III team. There we go, got that. So, this'll just be a brief kind of summary of where we were at and where we're headed and kind of what's happened. Obviously, it started about a week ago with some localized flooding in different areas of the county, and it started to ramp up as we had some rain events. The National Weather Service was real good about getting that information to the folks that needed it. And, you know, in Ukiah, they had issues with water waste lift station and some homes were threatened. On the tribal grounds, they had some floodwaters affecting the Union Pacific Main Line, which as most know, that's a pretty significant transportation route for them. And the water in the roadways is always an issue with travel. Obviously, the Bureau of Reclamation with regards to the Mackay Reservoir, they were near capacity, you know, prior to the weather events, and then upstream with those events and the snowmelt produced lots of runoff that produced those big inflow amounts into the reservoirs created some issues. Cedar Pendleton, obviously, we're dealing with some roadways being flooded, some residences, wastewater, stormwater issues with the high water and some power issues. We had, I think, at least six homes without power, and they won't be able to get that back until the water has receded to a certain level. And they had some evacuations, the most being noted with the care center there at Willowbrook. Cedar Hermiston had some localized flooding, low areas flooding in the city parks and by the Oxbow Trails, and they had some road closures as well. City Umatilla, of course, their big incident was the walking bridge across the river near the high school, which many of the students use, collapsed either Saturday night or Sunday morning sometime. And then, of course, lots of other areas around the county. Reef Road and Noble Road had some flooding as well, so, pretty widespread throughout the county that we haven't seen in a long time. Not in, I don't think even in the flood of 91 that affected the Mackay area was this widespread that I remember. So definitely some significant issues all over the county. So it was ramped up, you know, sandbagging was taking place in the city of Pendleton, down in the Mackay area, along 41st Street in that area, and I know there were probably 20 to 24 homes that were impacted that had some level of flooding inside there, and there may be some folks have some more upbeat information on that, but that's still significant when you have that many families that are impacted. Cedar Hermiston also had the localized flooding, the park and Oxbow Trail area, and almost have a new channel through part of it, so that'll be interesting to get fixed. There's a picture of the city of Umatilla's walking bridge. It's no longer usable, and so now the kids will have to walk about a half a mile west and then walk up Highway 730 towards, to get to the school. And I think that's always, that's a big safety issue for me at least, as a fire chief thinking about the busyness of that 730 highway now having kids walk along that. So, that's a big deal for the city of Umatilla and the school district, probably. So, going along this, starting last week, you know, the county of Umatilla and the city of Pendleton and the individual cities were kind of handling their own deal, and they activated the EOC and to try to get some more help in there. And the EOC is a place at the Sheriff's Office that kind of has an ability to stand up extra help, post an IMT, and try to consolidate our efforts and unify those efforts in command and control. So what happened, I think, let's see, about Friday, Saturday were times of the increased water flow into Mackay. Bureau of Reclamation had had to increase their outflows, and I think Sean's here to talk about that, I assume. What happened then is Scott Goff is my Fire Marshal of District One, but he's also the Area Nine Fire Defense Board Chief, and that encompasses Umatilla, Moro and Gillum Counties. And so he went up and chatted with Tom Roberts, Emergency Manager, and other folks, I suspect, and they were, kind of had some duplication of efforts between the county and the city, and it was decided that it'd be nice to try to pull our small Type III team in to try to get some command and control and just some more effectiveness and efficiency built into that, maybe set us up to bring in another state team. So, we did that. Saturday afternoon, we came up for a briefing, we got a delegation authority from the county and the city, and we put an instant action plan together that night for the next day and tried to pull some things together, and we got a great PIO shop with four PIOs started Sunday morning, from the county, the city and the bureau and the local fire districts, so that was a big help. Messaging to the public is probably one of the number one things you need to do in these events, so they will make up their own stories and they stay informed. So we did that, we figured there was a little bit more there to take care of, so we were able to order a instant management team, one of three, from the State Fire Marshal's Office. Because in statute, they only cover like urban search and rescue and wildfires, this was kind of a voluntary assignment for those folks, and I think they ended up bringing about seven in to take over for us, and it's because we had jobs to get back to on Monday locally, so they were able to come in and continue that great work, and I know they did great work under the leadership of Tom Williams and...
Scott, can you point out which one Tom is?
Tom is sitting right there, the front table in the gray shirt, he's kind of got his left hand up, that's Tom Williams. He is the number two man and the Operation Section Chief for Portland Fire Bureau, so he's used to doing lots of incidents and big incidents and stuff. He was actually the IC when they had that big gas explosion downtown, so that hurt some firefighters and some civilians, so.
Not that it's critical, but he grew up in Hermiston and...
Yes, he actually spent time in Mill Free Water, growing up as a small child, then spent some years in Hermiston working for the fire department back then. So, Tom and I are actually very, very good friends, and I know he's good friends with Sheriff Rowan, and, you know, when you kind of grow up in the public safety sector together, you get pretty close when you work on the roads together, so. State team came in, I think they did a great job for the city and the county, I'm sure they did, and they were demobilized last night, I believe.
Yes.
And as things turned back to the local control, to the city and the county. And so we increased our coordination, you know, we were sandbagging stations, communications, we had good communication with the Bureau of Reclamation as far as issues, the flow increases from the dam, we're getting public information out, we used Alert Sense, was a good tool we were able to use for that. The evacuations, I think, went pretty smooth. Traffic control, I didn't really hear any too many issues. I think the biggest issue we talked about was 395 south from my outpost, one to six, a lot of folks, and I would call them, you know, gokker blockers or whatever, you know, but they want to see what's going on, so that was causing a little bit of traffic stuff, issues on 395, and I think there were some also folks trying to get down onto 37th and Quinney and 44th in those areas to look to, so, but not too bad. One of the biggest concerns, I think, that we saw was the wastewater treatment plant and the sanitary sewer issues the city was having, with the possibility to put water into the sewer plant, could then put sewage into the Umatilla River and so forth, but I think that was averted. We did have that private bridge right there that kind of collapsed, sort of. Those folks, at least to one house, they were already evacuated, so that was a good thing, but we'll still, that'll still have to be handled in the recovery position of the recovery areas. Stormwater systems, you know, lots of extra stuff, they usually see about 4 million gallons a day through the treatment plant, and they were seeing 8 to 10 million, which is a record the city has said, so, significant issues. Other roads and bridges, you know, we had stage equipment, I know the city had one at the Kirk Street Bridge where they were trying to push stuff under the bridge, and just lots of issues around, I know that, I think, the county shops out of Stanfield has even had some floodwaters at some point, so. A lot of people and agencies were actually affected by this. Weather Service is really good with us, trying to always give us updated information to the best of their abilities, so. Obviously, they're ongoing assessment recovery, we had Team Rubicon come in to help with those windshield surveys and damage assessments of those areas, figure out what we have to work on in going forward, and we'll have issues with maybe damage and debris removal, what do we do with the sandbags, how do we get those picked up and stored again, and then the issue of public health issues, and I think the biggest part there is some of those private wells in that Mackay Basin area could be compromised if they got floodwaters down in those wells, so. And that's about it for my summary part, unless there's any questions or comments.
Do know, Scott, that this is the executive summary of the flood that was presented to us earlier this morning by Tom.
I, and I talked to Tom, good.
Yeah, and he has already given it to us.
Okay. If there's nothing else, thank you very much.
Scott, I want to thank you and your team. You guys did an amazing job for us, I really appreciate it.
Just looking at this before we get to the bureau, their preliminary report, which is preliminary, says that they completed, already have completed 156 assessments, 108 properties were damaged and 48 structures were damaged, and that's still preliminary. So, who's going to speak next? Please identify yourself and...
Sure. Commissioners, constituents, my name is Sean Kimbrel. I am the Umatilla Field Office Manager for the Bureau of Reclamation. I'm responsible for the operation and maintenance of Mackay Dam and Reservoir, particularly during this time of unprecedented levels of rain upstream of this facility. For the record, I'm going to give a press statement that we had released yesterday to the public, and then I will speak to this one slide to demonstrate the operations of this facility and the continuous coordination and collaboration that needed to happen with the community in order to minimize impacts downstream. Mackay Reservoir is authorized primarily for irrigation purposes with a limited amount of storage for flood control purposes. To put numbers to this, the normal storage capacity of Mackay Reservoir is 65,500 acre feet with an additional 6,000 acre feet for flood storage purposes. This spring, with the much higher than average snowpack that fell in the entire month of February, Mackay Reservoir was kept below the normal full capacity to capture increased runoff in addition to forecasting with the best available historical knowledge of past spring storms. And I will note, and it's not on this statement for the record, as soon as we knew the weather forecast from the National Weather Service, that's when we had drawn down the reservoir to a capacity of just over 59,500 acre feet, leaving double the flood storage space in this facility in anticipation of the forecasted rainfall events. Two back-to-back rain events in the Mackay Creek watershed produced unprecedented precipitation totals. The over three inches of rain produced by these rain events is well above monthly average total for the entire month of April. So, average month of April of rain happened within a three-day period this past week. These storms generated more runoff than was available in the remaining storage of the reservoir for flood purposes while keeping outflows within the downstream safe channel capacity for the community of Pendleton downstream. An interagency team was established to collaboratively make decisions on increasing releases. The team comprises of reclamation officials, the Umatilla County Sheriff, Umatilla County officials, the city of Pendleton, the NOAA Northwest River Forecast Center and the National Weather Service. This interagency team has met regularly in the past week to receive updates on changing conditions and forecasts that inform timely and accurate decisions on operations of this facility. Mackay Reservoir operations captured the unprecedented high flows, and I'll give some statistics to that beyond this statement, which were over 900 cubic feet per second higher coming in than the highest outflows going out of this facility. And this was all to minimize impacts to the community while best preparing for the continued pattern of predicted high-flow events upstream based on National Weather Service forecasts that were then put into the NOAA Northwest River Forecast Center. When I talk about unprecedented high-flow events, in a five-day period, and we'll speak to this slide that we have up here, from April, Monday, April, we'll say Monday, Tuesday, April 9th through Friday, actually Saturday, April 13th, we'll take that five-day total right there. That five-day total inflow volume was the highest seen in over 50 years. And when I had the hydrologist in Boise who coordinated with us on this interagency team do a look back on the statistics, that was for the entire record of inflow and outflow information we had for the facility. I then had them look back overnight through the United States Geological Survey records of inflow and outflow. The USGS record of inflow going back to 1924, which was when this facility, Mackay Dam, was built, the highest inflow of over a five-day period on record was on the days of January 28th through February 3rd, as I understand, 1965. And so if most people recall, the 1965 flood was a pretty massive event in this region. From what I remember knowing flood history, that's what flooded the town of LeGrand in that community on the Grand Ron River, and so that's one of those historical events that we had seen again at this point, and I can't give you a volume comparison to the two, but I will say for the record, that event happened during the December to February timeframe when you expect these large rainfall events. Meanwhile, this event happened in early April, which we did not have any historical information on such a high inflow happening this late in the season on Mackay Creek. I had one more point with this, and it's to speak to this slide. As you guys may see, this slide is showing daily inflow and outflow volumes in acre feet. An acre foot is one acre land, one foot deep of water. It's from Monday, April 1st to Monday, April 15th. The blue bars is inflow into Mackay Reservoir, the orange is outflow out of Mackay Reservoir. The green line we're demonstrating is the elevation of the reservoir over time. The inflows, on the vertical axis on the left for volume is in thousands of acre feet, and on the right, it's reservoir elevation. To illustrate how we operated this facility, as soon as reclamation became aware of the forecasted high rainfall events coming Sunday night into Monday, operators started to ramp up outflows, beginning on Friday, April 5th and Saturday, April 6th, to the, what is termed as the downstream safe channel capacity of approximately 1,200 cubic feet per second. You'll see that orange horizontal bars stay consistent all the way through Wednesday, April 10th, as these rainstorms continue to move through. On Thursday, as soon as we became aware of the forecasted inflows were going to continue to be higher, that's when we made, reclamation made notification to the National Weather Service and the County Emergency Manager, Tom Roberts, that we have a storage problem here. If we continue on the same outflows with these increasing inflows to the reservoir, the reservoir would lose its complete storage space by early Saturday morning based on these projections. That's where having that communication on the local front and working together with the city of Pendleton to figure out how can we release flows downstream incrementally and in the safest manner for the public, knowing that there was more coming upstream and there was a limited volume in the reservoir. During this whole time, dam safety officials in Boise and Denver were involved in the communications with reclamation. The dam was safe the entire time, we did not see indications to indicate otherwise. This facility operated as designed during this event. It was just a matter of how did we provide enough time to the community downstream to pass these flows in the safest manner possible, working together with all the local officials knowing what is downstream. And with that, are there any questions, or I'll open it up to commissioners?
I understand that in the period of time prior to the flooding incident, you had received complaints about releasing too much water, is that...
That is correct.
Was causing erosion or basement flooding, and this was before the incident occurred, is that correct?
That is correct. To my knowledge, I know that residents were communicating that their basements were beginning to get flooded due to high groundwater. Our flows were within that channel capacity, but there was also rain occurring in the community which causes high groundwater tables. As I understand, we did receive that notice, that's part of when we were still monitoring this facility closely, knowing we were going into this period of high rainfall events, but we knew we needed to, we knew we needed to operate this facility in the safest manner in regards to even those complaints that were going on.
Is the dam, just as a matter of record, is the dam characterized as irrigation or flood control?
Its primary authorization is irrigation. The storage in it, 65,500 acre feet is for irrigation purposes. The downstream irrigation districts have contracts with the federal government to have this volume of water provided to them downstream. And then there is this secondary authorization in benefit of 6,000 acre feet for flood control purposes on this facility.
I wouldn't want to demean the flood control element, but I think there's been some confusion of its original purpose.
Agreed.
One of the things I wanted to point out was, you know, as somebody who spent pretty much all weekend in the EOC, I want to commend you and your staff for the communications that you were, and the updates you guys provided, I mean, it was invaluable to us. We were able to know exactly what was coming in and what was going out, and I know it was, if, in a perfect world, this never would have happened, but it did, but I really appreciate you and your staff for stepping up and really doing what it took to keep everybody involved and doing the best that you guys could do, so, thank you very much.
Thank you for communicating and coordinating with us for the benefit of the public with the situation that we were dealt with.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Others? Terry?
I guess I'll take over from here. So on, as Scott indicated, Chief Stanton indicated early on, Terry Rowan, Sheriff's Office, for the record. So on Sunday, when the Green Team came in, we went to a unified command where Tom Williams and myself were in charge of the Operations Center and coordinating all the efforts of public safety, public works, et cetera, et cetera, communicating with all the interested and impacted partners. And so as things started kind of normalizing later on, Monday night and then the Tuesday morning, we started having our conversations about recovery components and making sure that we're implementing those, all the while maintaining good communication with the public by putting out press releases on a regular basis, letting the public know where we were at, posting various items of interest on our various, either county website, Sheriff's Office website, Facebook, Pendleton City Facebook and their website, just to let people know. And what became clear to us was there were some areas, particularly in the county areas, that folks have domestic wells, and so we wanted to get that health message out there to those individuals about boiling water, et cetera, et cetera. As of yesterday, I was getting some communication from some of the residents south of Pendleton that they were in the process of or had already had their systems tested by a qualified lab. At that point, the probably half a dozen folks that I spoke to said that their well was okay, but that doesn't mean all wells are okay. A lot of the stuff that we were seeing was not necessarily water from the creek coming into some of those homes, it was the groundwater coming up through and infiltrating their crawl spaces and/or basements. And so, at this point, we've been, our focus has moved from that first response recovery or first response in public safety aspect to now recovery. We're still monitoring a number of different problem areas, Ukiah being one of those. And so in terms of the various flooding that was framed early on, Mackay Creek isn't the only impacted area. There is still some concern up in the north part of the county along the Walwal River, out by Given and onto Tribal Ground. It sounds like they had probably about a half a dozen or so homes impacted there, and then again, as indicated earlier... And then again, as indicated earlier about Umatilla, Noble Road, and those various areas. So what we're going to be doing over the next several days probably is just getting a more clearer picture of what all those different places look like and try to get a damage assessment. And so I know through the state declaration that there is a threshold that needs to be met, and so we're going to try to do our level best to get that threshold met. Of course, in an event like this, federal assistance is always handy, and it's my understanding that through FEMA, they reimburse it about 75%, but the 25% match can be in kind type contributions. And so there was some conversation about some of the volunteer aspects of it. Could that be calculated into that match? And so we're exploring all those things. And then just on a personal note, you know, what I saw throughout this whole thing was the enormous amount of public support through folks volunteering. The sandbag station was, had as many as 300 or plus filling sandbags and helping get those loaded into vehicles so that they could be placed, all the way to businesses allowing their staff to go and help with the process, restaurants providing food and whatnot, water and coffee, et cetera, et cetera. I guarantee you, the EOCI has never, or the EOC has never seen the amount of food that was brought in for this operation. So that was certainly welcomed, and I appreciate Scott's team, I appreciate Tom's team for coming in, and I also appreciate the commissioners kind of being in the middle of this. As we move forward, we'll probably be coming back to the commissioners with some other initiatives. And then probably within a couple weeks, maybe longer, we'll do a debrief to talk about what went right, what went wrong, what can we do better, how can we be better prepared for the future. I think that's all we have.
Questions?
No.
Comments?
Thank you, Sheriff.
I would like to acknowledge for the record the presence of Emergency Manager Tom Roberts, who has been there steadily, Captain Llewellyn, Lieutenant Holcomb, and I would also recognize Under Sheriff Littlefield, who isn't here for the record. Any further comments relative to the flooding?
Joe was there too, quite a bit.
Yes. Okay. All right. The next item on our agenda is a sewer grinder project payable, so we could take a brief break if some of you don't want to stay for the remainder of the agenda.
Scott?
Thank you.
Maybe. Are you up again?
I was going to speak on this.
Yeah, this is probably him.
He is.
Pardon me?
Are you speaking on the sewer grinder? Is that you?
Yeah.
Okay.
Thanks, Corey.
I'll adjust the agenda. The sheriff will speak on item two, which is the sewer grinder project payable, and since our DA is here, we'll move, he can speak right after the sheriff. Okay?
This, I think some, oh, a month or so ago, or a couple months ago, we had our grinder that grinds up all the waste coming out of the facility go out on us. We did an emergency order and approval process to actually get a new grinder in. But then when staff went to replace the grinder, they learned that there was more to it than what they were capable of. So we reached out for bids on taking the old grinder out, putting the new grinder in. Northwest Metal Fab was the only company in the area that bid it, and so they were able to come in and perform the work, get the grinder up and running at the expense of $8,402. That includes materials and service and personnel cost. And so this is, as indicated earlier on, this is a needed item because there's no telling what inmates will flush down the toilets. We've had them try to flush blankets down the toilets. And so if that's compromised, then everything downstream from that gets compromised as well.
I'll need a motion.
So moved.
Second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Dan, are you prepared to speak without Kathleen? Okay. Then we'll move item four up. I haven't forgotten three, counsel.
We're going to start with a law clerk?
Yes. Yeah.
And so, I'm in court so often now, I almost started with your honor.
That's fine. Your majesty, your honor, whatever is comfortable.
This is where I'm at. I was in court, I have to get back to court at 10:00, so we'll start with your honor. So we're seeking to create a new position here in a law clerk position is what we're doing. As you guys are well aware, we are in a situation right now where we are understaffed with our attorneys, and we're trying to find creative ways into bringing professionals out here to Eastern Oregon, specifically to Umatilla County, to assist us with our need for attorneys. And so right now, we are, wanted to create this position that would be a temporary position each year, kind of one that's, I guess, really temporary right now for this year. For an individual that is either in law school or graduated from law school, there are different levels, which is why it's broken down with different pay. And with that different level brings with it a different ability to be able to perform different tasks within our position. I think this would be a great opportunity for us to try to get professionals out here during their time while they're in law school to kind of get their foot in the door, get a feel as to how our office works, maybe get a feel for Eastern Oregon, because a lot of the individuals that we have are from the valley, worked here for some time, and then either, you know, think that they may want to move back, or they may just not apply because they're not familiar with the area. And I think this would be a good opportunity for us. And so that's what we're doing there for that law clerk position. I can answer any questions if needed.
No, we vetted this quite a bit, so I'll accept a motion.
So moved.
Second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And there's a companion issue.
Yes, and so the secondary issue is, is we have a legal secretary position open right now. We are filling a longtime employee of 25 years. That position is to start on May 1st. We also have a new position that was to start on July 1st. We have been in the process of doing interviews for the May 1st position, and we are in a position, I think, to where we're communicating with HR now is to fill that position. We would then be opening this position, the same exact position up again for a July 1st start date. I think that it would be prudent for us to make this May 1st start date viable for these two individuals, so we could do the training together. Instead of duplicating the training, it's going to be the same exact training, get it moving forward, I guess, starting May 1st and effective at that time.
So moved.
Second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay. We'll go back to item three, the Morrow County Onsite Septic System Program. Joe?
Good morning. My name is Joe Fumara. I'm Director of Umatilla County Public Health, and what I'm asking for is for you guys to approve the new IGA between Umatilla and Morrow Counties to allow for us to expand the septic program and perform those services in place of DEQ on behalf of Morrow County. There would also be an agreement MOA between DEQ, Morrow County, and Umatilla County that delegates that authority down to us. There will be no impact on the general fund for this program. It is fully supported by the fees for the services.
Well, since Joe knows that I'd accept any such similar program west of the Mississippi, I'd be happy to make the motion.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Very much.
Do note, Melinda, that only included Morrow County this morning. All right. Item five, server purchase. Mr. Lanai.
Good morning, commissioners. Dan Lanai with the Ministry of Services. And we have in the capital outlay, $30,000 to buy backup servers for our servers at the jail and the courthouse here. The idea behind this is we have a replicated server out at the jail for the courthouse's servers, and then one here at the courthouse for the servers out at the jail, in case there's a catastrophic event out at the jail, a fire or something happens there. Or there's an event that happens here at the courthouse, there's a backup at each of those facilities. The quotes that we got to provide, these are just backup servers in case of emergency for limited, only the mission-critical servers will be on there, and we would have to manually move those over and start them up, so there'd be a little bit of a downtime there, but it's so that we can do continuation of operations, still be able to get payables out, and at the same time, be able to bring the rim system back up too, if there was an issue over there at the jail, so that they can continue doing their records management and those items. $19,276.32 with Dell off the government contracts, so they already have been bid, these prices. Any questions?
So moved.
Second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you. I think you have item six as well.
Thank you, commissioners. And Mark, if you could come up here too, because next before you is the payable, the final payable for the roof replacement of the courthouse. The amount of the cost is $85,850, and that included $2,000 extra for them providing a cover over the old basketball court up there for the materials for that. We had lots of issues with the roof not being completed and opened and different items, so that we had lots of damages upstairs. As you all know, we moved the DA's office and we had quite a few issues. We have submitted all those to our insurance, and our insurance company is dealing with Titan Roofing, our contractor, and his insurance. And so what we removed was $1,000 from the final payment of him for Titan Roofing, so that we could cover our deductible for the insurance. So instead of $85,850, it's actually $84,850. We waited till the, we had a good rainstorm, which, as you heard, we had over three inches of rain last week, and Mark can add to that, that we believe the roof is working. And I don't know if you want to add anything?
I asked Dan Premis this morning how the roof held, and he said, dry as a bone, so.
So we're confident that the roof is in a good working order, and so feel that we should go ahead and move forwards with the payment.
Make a motion that we approve payment?
Second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Do we need to take any action on the change order request?
If you want to, officially, that's possible. My thought was, since it's really outside the contract, I could just write a letter saying to that effect and saying that the county would not be.
Would you be more comfortable we took action? Either way, it's fine. Are you aware of the discussion, Commissioner Schaefer?
Yes, I believe I am.
The change order request?
Yes. I briefed Commissioner Schaefer yesterday.
That's what we were talking about yesterday, right?
Yes, and I gave him a copy of the letter.
Yeah.
I think it's a matter of record, we'll take a motion.
Okay. Sheriff, phrase that one.
Deny the change.
There was a change order request for $59,000.
Oh, okay, yeah. So I move that we deny the request for that change order.
Second, all in favor, say aye.
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 Okay. Thank you, commissioners.
We talked about that too, at one point.
All right. Post-employment retirement. No, post-retirement employment.
That does change things a little bit.
Yeah.
Good morning, Commissioner. Jennifer Blake, HR Director. So I'm here on behalf of Finance to request the post-PERS employment of Assistant Director of Budget and Finance, Marie Simonas. Marie intends to retire, that should say June 30th, not June 20th, of 2019, and then she would like to be a post-PERS employee, working in her current capacity through the following June of 2020.
I'm not comfortable with her retiring at all, so.
There is that, but I don't think we can stop her.
That being said, I would make the motion that we accept this, as long as we change the effective date to June 30th.
I would second it, as long as we indicate reluctance. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Item eight, fair stage transfer.
Is that you?
I guess so. This is coming before the Board at the request of the Fair Board. They have been in discussions with the city of Hermison regarding one of the older stages that is owned by the county. The fair really only uses it one time a year, and the city has use of it other times of the year. And so part of the EOTech lease, and along with it, this stage, the Fair Board is asking for you to approve the transfer to the city of Hermison of the stage. The city will maintain the stage and then make it available to the county for, during the fair, and at other times if requested and available.
So moved.
Second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Item nine, fair payable.
This is coming before the Board due to the dollar amount. Earlier, the Board had approved the initial payment on the Shellco Electric for that portion that the city of Hermison agreed related to the EOTech facility. This one is the remainder that really related to the more temporary nature of the services for use during the fair, and so it is before the Board for approval for payment to Shellco.
So moved.
Second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, just one second. Item ten, economic development grant.
This is coming before the Board for approval as well because of the dollar amount. This was a grant that the Economic Development Committee recommended for payment to the city of Pendleton for USA Range to conduct an economic impact study, and it's for $10,000, and it's payable from the economic development funds.
So moved.
Second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Item number 11, NACO Task Force. Would you mind handling that? Mr. Schaefer can do it.
Joe, wait a minute.
Yeah.
So Commissioner Murdock has been serving on the NACO Immigration Reform Task Force for three years. He's being considered for a vice chair of the task force, and the manager before the Board to indicate his support for the service, and I would make a motion that we approve that request, BCC 2019-031.
I might ordinarily abstain, but I can't, so I'll second it. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
And the last item that's been added to the agenda is to update the officers for the Board of Commissioners. Commissioner Alfreen has requested not to step down as Chair, and so the proposal is to appoint Commissioner Murdock as Chair and Commissioner Schaefer as Vice Chair for the remainder of this fiscal year, or excuse me, this calendar year.
So moved.
It is BCC 2019-032. Second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Are there additional items? No. Okay. Would you like to report on anything, Commissioner Schaefer?
Really, the only thing I really want to talk about was the outstanding response from our first responders, Umatilla County Sheriff. Your staff did an amazing job, and that goes all the way down. I mean, we saw a lot of people in that EOC, and I appreciate all their efforts.
That's all I have? I'll second that. Counsel, can I have a electronic copy of the rest? Counsel, can I have a electronic copy of the resolution, of the signed resolution? Thank you. All right, we're adjourned.